As I see Dr. Jones has, uh, has logged on, uh, 701. Um, and I'd like to call the, uh, this meeting slash retreat of the Board of Education, uh, to order in which I will start with, let's say, the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, I know we were originally scheduled to, um, start the retreat with an executive session. Um, and we will be rescheduling that. Uh, we will find a date that works, works best for, for all parties involved. Um, so on to the discussion portion of our, uh, meeting. Uh, the first item up for discussion is the elimination of flex time. Um, I know we were given a, a little, an update and report from, uh, uh, Principal Mayo, so I do not know if, uh, Dr. Jones and Principal Mayo would like to, uh, open the discussion with, uh, an overview of their, of their report.
I am going to kick it right over to, uh, Principal Mayo.
Think you're unmute.
You're on mute, Ralph.
If you all recall, thank you guys. If you all recall, uh, last spring Dana and I came to you, uh, with a proposal to change, uh, the end time of our school day. And at that point in time, you asked us several questions about, what the impact of that end time would have on, on students. So we went, uh, through the first six, seven months of the school year. We looked at those issues that you had brought up at that board meeting. So, uh, but going back a little bit, the staff survey last year, stated 202 out of 223 teachers supported elimination of flex time. And there were many challenges. Uh, many students struggled to use flex time effectively. They left campus without permission and athletics experienced lots of different conflicts. And, uh, parents were, uh, calling them out of flex time on a routine basis. So, and then you got, like I said, as I said before, you all, uh, raised concerns about traffic and dismissal logistics. Um, and also about, uh, students being able to, uh, be able to participate in clubs and activities and also, uh, getting help before and after school. So, let me take them one at a time. So traffic, traffic, if you come to the high school, and I'm not, I'm gonna go off the report a little bit, but you come to the high school at around 3:15 in the afternoon. The traffic on Hillside has, is cleared out. We have neighbors coming across us congratulating us on how well we've done in clearing the traffic. And I owe that to the, uh, Chief of Police. He has, uh, we changed our, where our officers were placed at the end of the day. So we have our SRO, guiding the buses out of the front circle and we have a traffic officer down at the end of Hillside and, uh, Hillside and the post road working the light so that when at 3:10, when we're ready to release the majority of our buses, that light goes green and traffic is moving right out onto Hillside. The only time we have a problem with that is if there's possibly an accident on, on the post road. For most days, that's working and I can tell you that from personal experience because I'm out there most days. So I can see it for myself. So, um, so that was the traffic part. And, uh, we did a few other things with traffic, but mostly that, uh, running that light at the end of Hillside and the, the post road was the biggest, uh, thing that we did. We also, uh, had the seniors that are parking North Lot leave through, uh, driveway five. So that helped. And, uh, and we made a, uh, we had an ordinance that was passed so that the, when you leave driveway four, it's a right turn only. And that also helped. So that was, that's traffic. Supporting students in clubs, uh, right now. And I'm gonna let Karen Foster talk about this a little bit. But she put a chart together for me and you got, you all have that chart on, on, uh, the documents that I gave you and approximately 150 clubs are, are operating right now at, uh, at the high school. So Karen, I hope you're there somewhere. You wanna talk about your chart that you gave me?
Sure. Um, yeah, as you'll see, um, what I did is I took the numbers of clubs that we had pre-flex and pre, you know, pre-COVID. So I went back to 2017, 18, which is when clubs typically met before or after school because there was no opportunity block, flex block or anything like that. So you'll see that, um, about 31% of the clubs met before school. And you'll see that 66% of the clubs met after school. What's interesting is at that point, there were 86 clubs at the end of that year. At the end of the 2017, 18 school year. Um, then you have some data, uh, from the 21, 22 school year up until now. Right now, we have about 36% meeting before school and 57% meeting after school, which is a shift from what they've done during flex block. However, you'll notice it's, it just went right back to what it was before the flex block was ever there. And what I wanna note is that we now currently have, it's actually 147 active clubs this year. So you'll see that, that even with the elimination of flex block, we still have a significant amount of clubs, actually way more than we had back in 2017, 18. You know, so as far as the clubs go, flex block is not significantly affecting it or affecting it at all. Uh, you know, the numbers are great. We have in typical, clubs close at the end of the year and we have new clubs. You know, new clubs that come every year. So we're right on track with what we were pre-flex block in terms of when they're meeting before, after school. And they're not also not having a problem finding advisors. Because as you can see, we've had, um, it's actually 66, it says there. I think we're up to, I think we have 71 new club applications. So that's 71 teachers that have offered their time either before or after school to me.
Okay, I'm just gonna move on. And then when I get to the end of this, we'll, uh, we'll take questions if that's okay with the board. We're also, uh, the board was also concerned with, uh, extra help. And, uh, when students would, uh, be able to get that extra help. Now during the school day, um, we provide extra help in every subject area. There's a learning center for every subject area. Um, there's five English and social studies. Learning centers, one each house. Partially, uh, those learning centers are used for, um, ninth graders. But also for students, uh, with, uh, a C minus or, or lower in any class that they have. But it's also used for students to come in and take, uh, tests in the, in English or social studies. You also have a, uh, math testing center. So that students can make up assessments there as well, because that was a big, uh, issue with, um, some of our parents at the beginning of the year. So they do operate, um, during all blocks. If something happens during the day and we're not able to staff a learning center, the students are directed to go to the house and, uh, their counselor or their, uh, house administrator will, will, will take care of them and, uh, support them in turn, in terms of taking a, uh, a test or any kind of assessment they need to. Students have been using, uh, extra before and after school. And one of the things they had to get used to was, uh, making an appointment with their teacher because their, their teachers, while they have to be there at a certain time, eight o'clock. And they have to be there until 3:15 in the afternoon. They, uh, are often up and around doing things, uh, meeting with their colleagues, making copies, get checking their mail, whatever. And so students needed to pin them down and make an appointment. So I think the students are, are there now and are, are being able to access, um, that support before and after school. But also what we, what we did and with, uh, Mr. George Joe's support, uh, we opened room 900 right after school as a study hall. So, um, students could complete assignments there if they wanted to stay after school and do that. And we run a late bus, um, at 4:15, uh, for those students. And that's also for students who wanna, uh, attend a club meetings or, or some kind of activity after school. They don't have to wait around till, we changed the late bus time from five to 4:15. So they didn't have to wait around to five o'clock to, to get home. And our late bus is a continued run on Monday, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that seemed to have been working out for students. I still haven't, uh, oh, we'll get back to that. Uh, but it's a, it's an extremely, uh, uh, safe dismissal process. Um, reduced traffic congestion from my point of view, and I'm standing on Hillside every day. Me, with the elimination of, uh, flex time, as we showed you last year, you get increased instructional, uh, time. We've had greater participation as that charter show, uh, shows and student activities, but also in athletics and intramurals. And we'll talk about that in a second because I'm gonna let Pete discuss that. And we have enhanced practice opportunities, um, that have helped contribute to three CIC championships. And now, not just one, but two SCAC championships because the girls cheerleading team won the SCAC championship, uh, last Saturday. So that was a great win. But it's, it's, the building is so much calmer now without flex time. I can't tell you how much, how calm the building is without, uh, flex time, uh, in there. And that's because I think there's, there's a lot of moving parts. A lot of people were going a lot of different ways. And I also think, for safety, for, uh, the sake of safety for students, which is what Dr. Jones and I were most worried about, is that everybody's leaving at the same time. People aren't cutting out. They're not, uh, leaving early and, uh, when they shouldn't be. Those are, you know, all the way from freshmen to, uh, juniors, I believe, that were leaving early, uh, when we had flex in, in, uh, the schedule last year. So overall, I think it's working out well. Pete, can you talk a little bit about athletics?
Sure. Um, good evening, everyone. After, uh, speaking with some of the coaches and some of the players, uh, it's been really positive without flex time. The kids are happier that the coaches are out there earlier. Prior to, the kids would get ready, but the coaches still couldn't join till after their school day was done. Uh, the coaches seem to have more time this fall. We're able to gain at least 20 minutes of daylight as we got late into the fall. Ironically enough, and we could say it's for flex for the argument of this case, but our numbers went up in the fall and in the winter for kids doing, um, athletics. We have roughly about 35 to 40 more kids in the winter season. And about that in the fall as well. Ralph touched upon our intramural program. We do offer the fitness room all year long. Uh, kids take full advantage of that. When we do have some downtime in between, um, seasons or when teams are away, we do offer other offerings in the gym and the study hall has been really well. We just, um, heard from a couple of parents and students, can we extend the hours? So we went from, um, in the memo, it said four, but it was 4:15. We pushed it to about 4:30. So it gives them enough time. So if the kids are gonna catch a late bus, they're gone. The kids start practices. Usually the later practices start around five o'clock. So the 4:30 stop time gives them enough time to grab a quick snack, change, get ready for practice. Uh, so we're gonna keep monitoring that. And if there's need to extend it a little more, we can. And other than that, I can't reiterate the fact of how quiet the building has been after school. Uh, like Ralph mentioned earlier, and, uh, any of you come through the building, we still have a bunch of kids that love to hang out in the gym foyer and in the athletic hallway, especially the athletes. They consider that their home. But, uh, that's by choice, not by, you know, by need because the room 900 is open. So, um, yeah, that's what I have for you guys right now.
Thanks, Pete.
Yeah, thank you.
So, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I, I see Kathleen's hand up, but the one que- uh, question that I was going to quickly ask is I know we talked a lot about athletics and clubs, which I think it's fantastic to see our students are, you know, able to access clubs and, and, and are returning to that as well. And I, you know, my question just is, is have you seen any, uh, impact that this has had on students getting support, uh, academic support after, you know, school time, if they need to finish a test or get support, uh, with any of their teachers? I know sometimes that time was used for that as well.
Yeah, as I said, Karen, the students really have to get used to, uh, because they, they haven't had, uh, this before. They always had flex time where they could make something up. So we had to get them used to making an appointment. They were not used to doing that. And they just assumed that their teacher would be, you know, in their office or in the classroom and they had, and once they did that, they, there hasn't been, I don't think, anyway, there's been an issue with students finding their teacher after school for support or before. I think most kids, uh, most students come before. After school has, uh, in the last three or four years has not been a great time for kids to, uh, for, for their own schedules to go and, and meet a teacher. They typically there would come before, not after, after they are booked.
Thank you. It's good to see that they're engaging in school outside of just the academics, whether they have flex time or not, but I did wanna make sure that it didn't negatively impact those in the other ways. So thank you for that. Um.
Ralph, if you don't mind, I'll add to that what Ralph said. Our coaches are doing a good job of monitoring too as well. When I do the eligibility list to make sure our kids are eligible. Their grades haven't been impacted. So I know that, uh, they had that opportunity too as well. So I just wanted to add that in there.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Yes, um, this is great. I have to say, I, um, on the academic question, I find that the teachers make themselves available all the time. I mean, you email a teacher and an hour later they'll try to find something. I know today, it's today's snow day. My kids are emailing their teachers. When can I make this test up? And the responses are within like 30 minutes. It's, it's impressive. And for that, I just feel like we should be so thankful. Um, so I just wanted to get that in there. Um, I have a question on the chart. Do you mind if we go, I don't want to pull it up. But, um, I am a little concerned still about, you know, I think we, we probably have traded a little bit of, the athletics is great and people can get, um, to their sports, but I still think that athletes, at least is my understanding, then are per, pretty much making the decision to not participate in clubs. And, and that's maybe fine. And perhaps at one point you do need to make that choice. But if I were, let me just look at the data for a second. If you were to look at this current year, so 24, 25, just to make sure I'm understanding it, and I don't know, I'm sorry if this question is to Karen or Ralph. So you had 17 clubs close so far this year.
Correct.
Right. And that's, I, that just, the number jumps out at me because you're only halfway through the year. And it's the same number than it's 21, 22. So it does suggest that it's impacting it a little bit, right? Because your pro-rata would suggest you're gonna close 34 clubs by the end of the year.
Um, not necessarily. Some of them, you know, we, if, like you said, 21, 22 was the same, you know, 17 clubs have closed. Some of them were really clubs that should have been closed at the end of the school year. And then after further consideration, they came back and, and the advisor was like, yep, they're not meeting or yeah, they were seniors and, and I renewed it and I shouldn't have. So not all of them, um, I can actually pull up the, let me just see. Um, most of them, so some of them were actually ones that I was waiting on. Like I just said, uh, there's about nine that the kids, you know, at the end of the year were kind of on the fence. And then they got back to me and said that they were, were not gonna be active this year. Um, then the other ones, like there were no student leaders for one. The other ones, they just weren't meeting. I don't feel that it's a significant amount that have closed because of flex time. I've only had two clubs out of all the clubs say to me, you know what, can we just put our, our club on pause for right now? They're actually not closed. Um, but can we just put our club on pause right now because we're trying to find a good time that works for everyone? Um, you know, and they had said, you know, it was because of flex block not being there anymore, but they're not closed. They're just trying to figure out a time that is gonna work for them. Um, you know, like I said, we have a high number of, you know, even if you look at the numbers, right, 152, 141, 168, 146 clubs, like right by the end of the, the year, a lot, you know, for the last four years. Um, but we do have a significant amount that closed and new ones reopen.
Right, right.
So, you know, the 17 that have closed, it's not, like I said, no one has said to me it's because of, of, of flex block. I have two that are on hold because of it.
Okay. No, that's helpful. I mean, because it's a huge, it's a shift, right? I mean, 80% of the clubs were meeting in a flex block last year. So the kids have had to readjust. I mean, I guess just what I'm concerned, and the reality is, it's probably still the best situation overall, right? But how do we improve it to, because my understanding too is, you know, it's, you're right. Like I think they're having challenges keeping the participation in some of the clubs because for some people it's better to meet in the morning, but then perhaps you're seeing your teacher in the morning, right? Or for some people it's better to meet after school, but then there are a few kids I know leave like very quickly from clubs because they have to get to their sport. And those are all like the right choices. Um, I, I just trying to think if there's another solution. I mean, you don't wanna send them to Google meets. I think that was an option. Kids don't seem to wanna do that, right? I mean, if there's a way that we can structure, I think we had talked about at one point, can we do it on homeroom, the homeroom days, but then the issue is that you wanna be able to get your, um, club, um, sorry, was it your sponsor necessarily to have that line up right where they're open?
Right, right. Yeah. And our advisory base, you know, we have council advisory. There's a lot of program stuff that's,
Yeah.
you know, that's put into there.
That's not gonna work either. I'm just trying to see if there's another creative solution. Um, but I'm sure you've all racked your brains as well. So, um, just to make it available to everyone, but.
We continue to advertise our clubs that are in existence, uh, on all our boards. And there are some really new, interesting clubs. In fact, I'm advisor to one club that just started, uh, that wants to take care of the plants in the student center. And I, I have 15, uh, students coming every other Monday, yeah, eight o'clock in the morning. So.
Wow, they even rope you in? That's.
Yeah, they got me.
Plants are always a good thing. They, they help provide an oxygen for an environment, but I do see that, uh,
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Ralph.
No problem. So Mike and then Sophie?
Yeah, um, excuse me. Ralph, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but, um, the executive summary here, uh, from everything you're saying, it sounds like this is, uh, this is a big win, right? The, uh,
I think so. The only deposit. Michael, I think this is, uh, a real big win for Greenwich High School. And, 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 and for the biggest win is it's a safer place. And, uh, Dr. Jones will, you know, will corroborate that with me. It's, this is a safer place now than it was when we're, I mean, it was just working like a wild, wild west, uh, during flex time, uh, in past years. And we couldn't sustain that.
Okay, Sophie?
I mean, I think this sounds great. I think a little bit, I'm gonna repeat Kathleen's concerns of just, you know, a worry about making sure that everybody has the opportunity to compete, um, to not compete in clubs, but participate in clubs, especially students who are competing in sports in the afternoon or participating in sports in the afternoon. Um, so I just think keeping an eye on what is the composition of the students who are, you know, involved in the clubs and making sure that everyone still has an opportunity because it's, you know, it's a really important part of being a student at Greenwich High School, you know, um, to have both opportunities. And I, I think the challenge is, as Ralph was suggesting, a lot of students are meeting with their teachers before school for academic reasons, but then that makes it really challenging. Um, to also have a club meet then. So I just think we should keep an eye on it. But it sounds like a positive change overall.
Yeah. So it's a big shift. It really is. And, uh, I think, uh, as our students, uh, get used to the, the time change and, and they'll figure it out because they're the most flexible people in the world. We, we, I should tell it's not so much, but the kids will, will figure it out and they'll, uh, uh, find time to, uh, enjoy the clubs that they've always enjoyed. So it's, uh, it's been a good change.
Mr. G, did you have your hand up because you had a?
Yeah, I just, I just put my hand up so I could add in on that. We were talking about clubs of participation. And we talked about athletes, but I think one thing that we might be a little bit overlooking and just because you might not be aware of it yet. Deirdre Burke has done such a great job with Unified Sports that we have over 35 kids. The majority are athletes that are participating in that two days a week. So those are the kids that sometimes would be going to a club that they're trying to figure out when their clubs can meet. So the, the fact of getting out at 2:55 and enriching that program. Uh, we have 15 or 16 participants and like I said, over 35, uh, partners that vary between the seasons because of their sports and those athletes from freshmen to seniors find ways to be there. So I think that could be another piece on why, uh, Ms. Foster's clubs are having hard times to meet. And we also had another new club that some athletes and non-athletes set up that's called Clear the Gear. And they're trying to, um, to get equipment for kids that are looking to participate in sports that may not have the equipment or the means of getting it or not sure they wanna invest in it yet. So I think our kids are getting a lot of opportunities to, to give to the community at the end of the school in many different ways, other than clubs and feel valued as well. So I just wanted to add that in.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I know that a lot of, it's not just students, they have stuff after school, but we also have people involved in orchestra and art that have, you know, and, and plays and a lot of that stuff happens prior to and after school. And I know they all seem to, I mean, the past have at least found time. And hopefully this is an opportunity for them maybe to create some additional clubs that meet at different times. Uh, maybe Wendy?
It's a busy place, Karen. It's a busy place.
I miss it. Wendy?
Uh, I just wanna say, I was really concerned about, you know, the, the kids being able to meet with their teachers and making up tests, um, and the clubs. And you guys have done, it looks like a, a really nice job of figuring out all these moving pieces. Cause I know it's not easy. It's a big school. But I was wondering, do kids, are, are they allowed to meet at night? Like at?
Absolutely. Student, uh, student government, for example, their executive, uh, board, they meet at night in the student center. Um, so yeah, any club.
Okay, so that's another, okay, time that they can meet. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks, Wendy.
Uh, does anybody else have any questions or comments in regards to flex time? If not, we can move on to cell phone usage. Going once? Okay, going twice? Off to cell phones. So, uh, the next topic, uh, up for discussion for us is, uh, the update on the cell phone, um, the changes to cell phone, uh, usage at the high school. Um, and that, the implementation of that, uh, revised policy.
Okay, so, um, back in July, uh, late, early August, Dr. Jones and, uh, and I and, uh, all the building principals got together to talk about how we were gonna regulate, uh, cell phones, uh, moving forward in the 24, 25 school year. The reason we, Dr. Jones organized this all is because the, she knew that the State Department of Education was gonna come out with new guidelines and she was worried that they were gonna be highly restrictive. And, uh, she wanted us to get a jump on. So we all met, um, in a big group. And then Dr. Jones and I met about the high school. And at that point, we determined that, uh, we, we were going to, uh, not allow students to use their cell phones, uh, throughout the school day. Uh, not even during lunch, not even during their open time. So that was the, the regulation that we came up with for the high school. And you can see it, um, uh, it's highlighted there. You can click on it if you wanna see what the regulation looked like. We then decided, once we, uh, did that, was to form a committee of, uh, parents, students, teachers and administrators to review what we had decided and make a recommendation back to, uh, Dr. Jones. So, uh, we began meeting, uh, on, what'd you say, September 27th, and we met regularly, um, throughout, uh, the beginning of the school year up until including, uh, the la- one of the last meetings was in December. Um, we, this was an interesting, uh, committee because, uh, I would, I would have thought that, you know, that, uh, the students would be, you know, uh, would be against this new regulation. The parents would be, you know, yes, they're all for it, but it wasn't. There, the opinions varied no matter which, uh, constituency you came from. So that, that was an interesting way to, uh, to sit there. And I didn't give my opinion. I just sit, listen, uh, uh, and, uh, we discussed next steps. we discussed next steps at every meeting. So because our committee could not really come to any uh, conclusion uh, about how the regulation should be im- implemented, we decided to do uh, a survey to the parents, students and to um, the teachers. Uh, we submitted that, we, we sent that, those uh, surveys and reminders out multiple times and we, we did get it uh, a nice uh, showing in terms of people participating in the surveys. For example, the parents, we got uh, we have twelve hundred and eighty parents uh, they uh, responded to the survey uh, eleven hundred students responded to the survey and uh, two hundred and nine teachers out of, well, that's out of two fifty-two. So that was a, we, we thought that based on those numbers, our, our, our uh, survey results are pretty valid. And if you look at questions, uh, so the teacher survey, you look at question seven, student survey, you look at question ten, the parent survey, five and six. We based our recommendations to the superintendent based on those numbers and the majority of, of uh, students, teachers and uh, the faculty said, yeah, let's let the students use their cell phones during opens and uh, lunch. So uh, that's the, and I'm skipping some, a lot of stuff here, but that's the recommendation that I made to the superintendent. And uh, and that's what I'm presenting to you all here tonight. And so there's also a draft of the, the new regulation at the last page of this uh, document. I don't need to go so fast, but um, slow down a little bit. It is uh, interesting uh, in that, you know, we brought in all sorts of data and articles about cell phones and uh, what other people were doing around us. So I'm sharing that with you a little bit. Uh, for example, uh, Ridgefield, uh, they can use their cell phones during free periods and lunch. No, uh, they don't, they didn't develop their policy yet, so they're still working on their cellphone policy. Uh, New Kane, students can use phones in the halls, free periods and lunch, and that may have changed since uh, the last time we contacted them. So I have to update you on that. Uh, Wilton, however, they moved to a hundred percent yonder pot pouches and a bell-to-bell phone ban. So that, I, I need to talk to uh, their principal who I went to graduate school with and Kevin Smith, who's their superintendent, see how that's working out for them, but they, they went to a bell-to-bell ban. The uh, Staples, again, they can use their uh, phones during opens. And Stanford High School, um, it's just that their, their policy, their, their regulation is just about uh, classroom. So we had a big discussion about uh, the classroom and how we would uh, have the student, the teachers uh, either use their, the pockets that we have provided to everyone or to our, have the students put them in their book bags. And uh, we, as a staff at Greenwich High School, have to decide on one consistent measure, and that's a method, and that's what our, our committee said to us. Actually, I said that at the faculty meeting on Wednesday, this past Wednesday. We need a consistent method, so we need to discuss how we're going to do that, whether it's everybody puts their phone in a pocket or everybody puts their phone in the bag when they enter a classroom. And uh, so that's uh, that was more of a focus as well. Uh, I also collected some data from uh, actually Tom Perera collected this data on the cellphone, uh, the code of conduct that, and we put cellphone violations into the uh, code of conduct this year. And there's been uh, sixty-seven referrals on cellphone usage in the classroom. And uh, so uh, the first time uh, that happens, self, uh, cell phones out during the class, it's confiscated, brought to the house office. Second time, uh, it's confiscated, I brought to the house office and uh, it stays there for an additional day. Uh, third time, uh, it could be three to five days, it would stay in the house office and there would be a meeting with the parents to discuss uh, a plan for the use of cell phones. Uh, but that's when students use them during uh, cla- in the class. And so uh, the teachers are pretty good about enforcing this. I've been in many, many, many classrooms this uh, this fall. I haven't seen that uh, cell phones, but the students that were on this, on the committee with me they said they have. So we have to do a better job with that in, in the classrooms. I think we're almost there. It's, it's, over the last three years, it's been, it's gotten better, better and, and uh, even uh, more better this year, but uh, we need to uh, uh, come up with a consistent process. So when a student comes into the classroom, they're going to do one thing or another, and they know what the drill is. There, there's no, you know, you're going to do this in uh, Mr. George's room, but you're going to do something different. This is Foster's room. Uh, we want to wait, and we do not want to waste instructional time uh, getting into arguments about that. So yeah, we'll be coming up with something new for them. Uh, and it'll be uh, hopefully by the end of March. So yeah, that's uh, my information on cell phones. And I don't know if any of the other staff members uh, want to pitch in. I, I know Dana's on tonight. Dana, yeah, are you on tonight? And uh, Pete and Karen, but uh, I don't know if anybody has any comments about cell phones other than what I've just made. And there's a, by the way, when you get to the surveys, there is a ton of comments after each question. So um, more than I could uh, go through tonight, it would take, it literally took me uh, a couple hours to get through the comments and then going back again and looking at the comments again. Um, to see uh, what students, teachers and staff had said. So that's my uh, that's my report on cell phones. So what we're asking is that we uh, change the regulation that we uh, that we uh, put together in August and go back to our previous regulation, which was uh, to allow students to use their cell phones during open time and uh, during lunch. And uh, a hundred percent not using them in any academic area.
Um, well, I was just going to say, I don't know if any of the other administration had wanted to to speak to your findings, but I wanted to first off just say thank you for convening um, a committee that included stakeholders from all different areas for this and taking, um, you know, surveying the students' parents and staff and, and taking their feedback to revise um, your recommendations as to what seems to work best for all of the stakeholders. Um, obviously, we're not going to be able to make everyone happy. Um, in every circumstance, that is ensuring that our students um, are being able to access their education and, and have the other uh, supports that are needed. Um, I had a quick, well, question or two, I, just in reference to the regulation, and I don't know if this was brought up because I, I know I'd mentioned it before. Um, especially looking through the responses, the regulation that you posted um, had uh, a recommendation to put the phones into the phone uh, pocket holders, but it didn't seem as though that was the majority response that a lot of this.
No, it's not. Yeah, I'm sorry, correct, Karen, I mean, yeah, that, that was uh, uh, half the committee thought that was a good idea, the other half didn't. So we, we put it in and uh, because we wanted to remind ourselves that we need a consistent method. It may not be the pockets, but it's got to be something that's consistent from classroom to classroom. So uh, we're not asking you to uh, do anything with that. That's, that's something.
You know, I just, I just know I brought this up when we talked about it. It just seems like that according to the survey, that wasn't the option that necessarily was supported by all three different stakeholder groups. I just, my concern is that it adds time when students are entering and leaving the classroom to put stuff in and out of a a pouch or a, or a pocket and or could be, you know, and again, we just have to consider about the, the issues of responsibility of ownership, because if we put the phone in the pocket, then it becomes if a student's private property, then becomes we're responsible for that. So if something gets damaged or lost or misplaced when it's in our duty, the school's duty of care, I just want, I, I want to make sure we've thought about that. Um, I, I think about that, especially if students or if student leaves something behind or forgets it and they have their ID, they can't pay for lunch, if they have to get back to a classroom, if it then causes a distraction for other students in that class that they have to run back. So I just wanted to make sure that when you guys are going through that regulation, that's something you, you think about because we often don't think about that. You know, responsibility, whose, whose property it then becomes in the interim, so.
Absolutely. Yes, that's definitely be considered. Time is our biggest consideration, Charlie.
Um, so I think I saw Laura's hand up first, then Wendy's, then Sophie's.
So I like the, I like that um, there's a policy in discussion that sort of considers students' free time when I believe they should be able to have access to their phones versus instructional time when they should absolutely not. I mean, in the lower grades, this is, you know, really in a way all day, but it's really for the high school where the kids are older, some of them are driving, some of them need to coordinate with parents in their free time. So I think um, you know, if you recall, there were multiple um, um, petitions before.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do, Laura.
You know, the, the community had a petition of, you know, parents and then God bless those industrious students. They created their own petition um, as, as students do when they want to be heard, which is adorable. And so I just want to congratulate you for considering all of the um, stakeholders and you know, these are humans on their way to becoming adults. And so, you know, they want their, their time to be their time during the day where if they need to um, return a text message or something to their parents or whoever's picking them up, it's, it's helpful in that regard. So um, thank you for considering all of that.
Thank you, Laura. And I just want to say, Laura, the uh, the petition uh, that the students had, the students from all over the country were signing that petition. Yeah, which I thought, I thought was, I didn't know that until somebody.
From sleepaway camp.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. And uh, yeah, so, yeah, that was, that was fun. But you know what? Um, we've been talking about freedom of responsibility since we walked into that uh, building in nineteen seventy-one. And uh, yeah, you can use your phone, but if you don't use it responsibly, we're gonna uh, make it difficult for you.
Do you even have a payphone at school anymore? Any, you have a payphone at school anymore?
No, the, the nine payphones are all gone. They've been gone for a long time.
I figured. I haven't found one yet, walking around, so.
That could explain why Superman has not have been, you know, available these days. Uh, Wendy?
Uh, I, I just want to echo what you said, Karen, about the responsibility and we need to think about that. That's very important. And also what um, Ms. Costin said about um, you know, just, I'm so thankful for you guys for revisiting this policy because um, I did not, I did not like the way it was written over the summer and it, and I'm, I'm relieved to see it's very reasonable for the, for the people in high school, for the students in high school. I'm, I'm happy that um, they'll be able to use it during their free time and that we're giving them the opportunity to be able to manage their use of their cellphone, which is what they're going to have to do in the future. Um, the only thing that I, I would maybe ask is that why don't we give the students the opportunity to do the right thing and to let them keep them in their bags unsilent? And then if they break or violate the policy, then you could put them in the, in the shoebag on the door. Um, but I don't know if we're beyond that now.
Uh, Wendy, we're gonna, like I said, I'm going to have the faculty discuss that because they're going to have to implement. So I'm gonna ha- uh, have them have a rich discussion about that and we're not going to make a, a quick decision. We're gonna, but I want it to be consistent. Whatever it is.
Okay.
Sophie, I saw your hand up, then Jen, then Mike, and then Kathleen.
Yep, um, well, one, I just wanted to note, I, I loved the survey and I thought it was so interesting to see particularly the responses from the teachers and how, you know, universally they feel like it's a problem and universally they feel like it is interfering. I mean, maybe there was two percent or something who didn't feel like it was interfering with learning. So I just think it's such an important thing for us to address, and I'm so glad that you are addressing it. Um, because obviously it's a huge distraction, specifically when they're talking about the amount of time that it takes in the beginning of class to get the students to put away their phones. You know, if we can get that down to just automatic that they're away, you know, and we can recover that, those instructional minutes, um, I think that's really important. And kind of relating to that, and I feel like um, Dr. McCante Anthony is probably going to agree with me on this. I think it's really interesting that Wilton is doing something much more aggressive and I'm glad that they are the guinea pig for a more restrictive you know, regime. And I, and I look forward to seeing how it goes for them in terms of both acad- you know, academically, do they see you know, test scores go up, do they see academic improvement? And also, you know, what are the impacts that they see in terms of um, you know, emotional, social, emotional health, right? And so I'm glad someone is doing it. I, I don't think that it should necessarily be us. But I'm glad someone is doing it so that we can see, you know, it gives us an opportunity to compare ourselves to a peer and see what is the right thing. Um, and I'm going to be really interested to see how it goes in Wilton, but I'm excited about what you described. So thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. So I have great, I have great connections in Wilton because I, like I said, I went to uh, graduate school with the principal. And so I can call him and see how he's, how he's doing. So I, I can uh, let you know on how that's going.
Thank you. I would love to know that. Thanks.
Ms. Behet?
Um, I pretty much echo what everyone is saying about really paying attention to cellphone uh, regulations, usage. Um, I too am interested to see how the other schools that you mentioned fare at the end of, of this year after they've implemented uh, whatever their regulation is as compared to how we will proceed and shape and, and work with, within our regulation. But I do have just one question. When I was looking at the documents and maybe you could speak to it. In the student portion, they did, they did um, just pulling up the number, I don't know if you want to pull it up there, but there was kind of a high percentage of students saying that they're using their phones for teacher-directed tasks. Do I have that correct in, in under some of the information the students certainly highlight?
Teacher, the teachers uh, at, says to them that they could take out their phone and use them. They can take out their own and use it.
Right, so that, that's not something that's going to change.
Yeah, no.
I mean, it's, everything within that class would be teacher-directed based on the regulation of the, the school regulation.
Kids like to, lots of kids like to take a picture of the notes or the assignment before they walk out of the room. We're not going, we're not going to uh, stop the students from doing that. So it's their way of being organized, it's their way of uh, you know, getting their information. So yeah, that's not an issue.
Okay.
Okay, Mike and then Kathleen?
Yeah, I think um, um, I think it's fair to say I'm not echoing what anybody's saying except maybe Sophie. Um, I think this is a real missed opportunity. Um, I think the research is clear um, that this is a crisis. I think the NAEP scores that just came up are underlying that. Um, and I think um, it's far too early uh, for us to reverse course. Um, and it sounds like the teacher survey data is supporting us. Um, the teachers are saying, you know, in that survey, the teachers are saying how significant this is and the majority of them are telling us, are arguing to, to put it away. Um, so um, um, I think um, anyone who, who hasn't um, read at least um, excerpts from, from Jonathan, from the Jonathan Haidt book about the anxious generation um, really needs to because um, it's um, it's frightening what, what's happened in the trends here nationally. Um, I think what we have to be mindful of as we continue to think about these regulations is um, the difference of a fourteen, fifteen-year-old brain um, and an eighteen-year-old brain. Um, the way we're writing it right now, the regulations are writing right. Um, the way we're writing it right now, the regulations writing right now, it seems like we're going from. Zero to eighty uh, from eighth to ninth grade. Um, and um, I'm unconvinced and I'm pretty sure the science and the research is also unconvinced. That that's a great idea um, to go from no freedom of cellphone to. I can take it out in between classes. I can take it out at lunch. I don't have to sit and talk to friends anymore. Or I can look at Facebook and all this stuff. And um, saying that um, well, we have to teach kids how to self-regulate and kids like that. It's not that simple. This is, these devices and these software are designed to be addictive. They're designed by um, adults, insidious adults to addict young people. That's not me saying that. That is Surgeon General and um, all the internal Facebook documents and everything else that have said that. Um, and I think it is, I think Wilton. Probably is concerned about that and all the other schools around the country that have gone to a hundred percent ban. But I think we need to, if we're not going to do that. I think at the very least, uh, we have to uh, be mindful that. Uh, eighteen-year-olds self-regulate uh, much differently than than fifteen-year-olds. Um, I think the other thing that as we continue to talk about regulations that we have to be mindful of. Uh, is institutionally, um, how we're undermining this um, by. Um, the school uses of of cellphones. They um. Um, which which gives me a little bit pause. Like, do we need to be asking kids to using their cellphones as much as we should? To buy lunch, to take out a book and things like that. Every time you take out your cellphone and things like that. You see the, all the blips and hips and things like that and suddenly you're absorbed in that world. And like I said, that's not, I don't know if that's fair for our fifteen-year-olds. Um, I think there's a reason why all of us, it seems curious that we're saying, oh, you know what? Then already for that in middle school, but then suddenly in high school. Um, we're saying it's carte blanche and suddenly kids can handle all that. Um, so I think we have to, I think we have to reca- I I would strongly consider us to. To reconsider the this direction, uh, particularly in, and we're thinking about more of a gradual release.
My fault, I got, I got a whole bunch of, I don't disagree with you all, to tell you the truth. Um, but. I, in our, in our, the three levels, cellphones are never allowed in elementary school. They just never were. And I think what happened at the the middle schools was we always had, when I was there anyway, for fourteen years, when I was at Eastern. Um, we always had the students uh, turn out their phones, put it in their bags and put it in their lockers. And we got away with that, away from that during COVID. So it's not like we, we uh, changed dramatically here. It was. It's always uh, not always, but for a long time, that's been our procedure. Um, I think that the biggest danger, uh, and you described it very well. The algorithms that these people write that get people hooked on um. Different uh, types of social media, but that's the danger. Social media is a danger. It's not the phone itself. It was just a flip phone and yeah, uh, you didn't have any apps on it. It would be, it'd be a great thing. But it's not. It's uh, it's social media and that's what we have to teach our students uh, to. We'll have to, you know, uh, give them some tools to be able to stay off social media and to stay focused on what they're doing. In the classroom. Uh, social media is the uh, it's not the phone. Social media is our uh. It's really our our opponent here and it uh, it it hurts a lot of kids. But uh, again, and I'll give you some just uh, why, I do lunch duty for almost an hour every day. And the kids are talking to each other. Um, not on their phones and not playing. Some of the boys, I've gotta admit, they're playing games, but okay, but. They redoing that with uh, you know, with uh, some other way, but uh, for the most part during lunch. The kids are talking to each other and during open time, they're working. On their schoolwork. They're on their laptop. So just my casual observations as, you know, I I work in the student center for a couple hours. Uh, every week just to see what's going on and that's just my observations and uh. The kids are working, not on the phones. And then uh. That during lunch, the kids are trying to find each other with their cellphones, which uh. Is helping for them. And then when they get to their their tables, they're talking to each other. It it's the good and the bad. And I think social media is the real, real bad. I think uh. Uh, getting through the lunch line now is a hundred percent faster now that they can open their cellphone. And scan it and that that buys them their lunch. I mean, it, so that, those kinds of things that coming into the building, you gotta show your ID. Um, and it's on your cellphone. Uh, it makes us a safer uh, building. Um, because uh, and and if you don't want to have yourself, your ID on your cellphone, you can always get a hard copy. And you can still uh, you know, punch in your number, your code for your uh, for lunch. But I I. And educationally, I, there's no way I can disagree with what you just said.
I, right before, I know Kathleen hit her hand up, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, for also pointing out, because every time I've been there for lunch, you see the students. Actually conversing and talking about stuff. The only time I usually see them pull out phones is if they're trying to coordinate. Something, a schedule or showing something like a phone, you know, something to somebody else on their phone and. You know, I'm glad to hear that the lunch lines are moving quicker.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I mean, I think this is a really nice balanced approach. And I appreciate how there were dueling petitions over the summer and then you took surveys from, you know, all the stakeholders. I was most intrigued to see that parents and students strangely aligned and I don't think that was premeditated. So that's, that's exciting. Um, but I think that, I I like everything you said, Ralph. You you kind of, I don't even want to. Say anymore because you concluded it perfectly in the sense that you're seeing the students there every day. I was lucky enough to be there yesterday and I a hundred percent agree. I mean. Kids are talking, they're engaging with one another. But I also liked a little bit that you said that sometimes when they come into that massive student space. That can be a little bit intimidating and to be able to text a friend like, hey, where where are you? And then join them. Is also really powerful. And um, you know, those are the things that we didn't have necessarily growing up and I'm not saying that was a good or a bad thing. But that's the reality and that's, that's a nice um, something because that student center could otherwise probably be a bit overwhelming, right? Especially if you're, if you're new to the school. Um, so all those things I think are great. Um, and. I I also liked what Wendy said. I think that maybe a good idea is, I think consistency is key. But that you maybe start with, you self-regulate, you put it in your bag and then. If if that's not gonna work for you, then perhaps we have to take a different approach, but um. That's just, I I love this conversation. So thanks for all this information.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kathleen. Thanks for uh. Congratulations to you for your uh. Thomas uh, getting that scholarship uh, Division One scholarship to MIT is a wonderful thing. But the other thing, and I love that Catherine's son going back to clubs, started. That's an endowment club. They have uh, they've offered the high school uh. A little over three thousand dollars to buy. Um, that what they like is to buy some uh, games for the student center. So students would get off their phones. And maybe play some games uh, in the student center. And I know Sophie uh, brought that up to me at the beginning of the school year. So I think uh. Thank you for your kid, by the way.
Well, thank you for helping him.
And happy, happy to donate some uh, some appropriate games for for the lunch, lunchroom. I have a few that uh. My kids have outgrown, but.
You ready to, you ready to move them out? Okay, okay.
Wendy, I see your hand up.
I I I'm just looking at the data again and so I I'm just a little confused. How can we, how can teachers say it's a problem? Because six seventy-four point five percent of the students reported that teachers ask them to pull out their phones. And and I I also have another point on that. And and if the teachers are asking them to pull out their phones, how disruptive is it going? Is it going to be for them to have to run over to the shoe rack to go? Pull their phone off of it to take a picture of whatever the teacher wants them to take a picture of.
And and when, that's what we have to figure out. It'd be easier if the phones in the bag, their bags are always right next to them, but. Um, but we need to have a discussion about that. I'm not gonna make that decision. I'm gonna, the faculty's gonna have to come together and make a decision. And and they're, they're more, they're very concerned about uh. Class time and the number of minutes they're engaged with their students. So we'll uh. We'll have a rich discussion about that and and figure it out.
I'm sure you will. Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you, Wendy.
Um, I don't know if anybody else has any additional questions or comments, um, but I do want to again say, appreciate. To you, Ralph, and to the administration at the high school and and so forth. How much um, I think it's clear that we all greatly appreciate that you have been very open to. Including the stakeholders um, and their viewpoints. And I'm sure that our students, our staff. Um, and the parents do appreciate that they were, that their opinions were heard in this manner and that their. Opinions were taken into account and you guys are finding the best way to move forward that that supports our, you know, our teachers and our students and their academics and. Other social emotional things and to comments to those who, you know, in case, so we don't get uh. Frustrated emails later or whatever that for students that are on the wifi, just if you could clarify, they, there are certain like. Uh, social media sites and everything else that are blocked, right? So if they're using the school wifi, they can't access.
There are certain social media uh, applications that are blocked. Um, on our wifi, but they can always get them on uh. On their networks, on their 5G network if they're, if they can get that in scores. Uh, however, folks, just remember, we're spending two million dollars to upgrade our. Our ability to uh, use the cellular system, so. But that's it, that's for safety. I mean.
I'm just saying that we're doing what we can to ensure that students, if they're using our school wifi and things like that, don't have access to some of the social.
There's a, there's a double, you know, uh. Block to uh, any of that kind of stuff that we deem to be uh, inappropriate.
I just wanted to make sure those that didn't know knew that we we had those there.
Yeah, however, that doesn't, you know, once they walk out of that building and they're on their own networks, then.
That, that is true. But anyway, I do appreciate that you guys have taken the time and and energy to to really, you know. Review all of this this past semester. I'm sure we look forward to seeing how things go the next semester, uh, you know, the school year for for the students.
I I want to give uh, uh, like to thank Dr. Jones for allowing us to go through this process. And and determining uh, and making the change in regulation based on what the committee decided. So. Uh, Tony Adams, I don't see you on there, but you are. And so thank you for uh, giving us the opportunity to work through this uh. Uh, there at the beginning of the school year.
Thank you, Ralph, and thank you to your whole team. You guys have done a lot of great work between Flex and the Cell. And even you mentioned the code of conduct. All of that was brand new, worked on over the summer. Um, and Tom Prera did a lot of work with the middle school principals on that. So, yeah, great job. Thank you.
Yeah, just to, thank you, Tony, again. And just to be consistent with the middle, with the middle schools, uh, the code of conduct. So, yeah, we did a lot. This was a big summer. Thanks, Tom. Thank you, uh, members of the board. Appreciate it.
Of course. Well, if there's no other comments, I, again, we'll look forward to getting another uh, you know, little update at the end of the year, I'm supposing. Um, and we can move on to our action items. Um, thank you for uh, to our administration that's here this evening. Um, and we are going to roll over to the Hamilton Avenue HVAC. Um, discussion that we're going to have is a, is an action item and going to find the uh. We have a motion to make to put this on the table. Pulling up, sorry. The one thing I didn't have out, sorry. It's a document, sorry. Um, I I'm assuming we just have a motion to uh, add Hamilton Avenue HVAC to the FY twenty-six capital plan. Do you have a second? Okay, Ms. Costin, thank you for seconding.
A price?
Well, I think we're just putting the, we we haven't even decided which HVAC.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So it's just to put whatever decision we make into, I guess, the the. In into our um, budget request for the next, you know, upcoming year. Um, I know where the discussion that we're having this evening is, uh, there has been a revision to. The recommendation. Uh, well, there hasn't been a revision to the recommendation, but. Uh, in in the way we're using, if we decide to uh, reuse the geothermal. Uh, the EMAC has worked. I mean, I'll let somebody else, Ben is here and and I don't know if Dan is here, but. There was a discussion with EMAC and they have revised how they uh, would recommend we reuse and re. Redo the um. Geothermal cells, uh, geothermal system, which would better support the school. So I'm gonna hand it over to uh. To to Ben, I think, right? Are you leading this?
I'll, I'll kick it off. Mike, do you mind promoting Dan Watson? I see he's in the uh, the gallery. Uh, as he's getting promoted, we also have uh, two representatives from ACOM. They've joined us in the past. Uh, they're, they're our content expert and they're our engineers that worked on the project. I don't want to go through all the bullet points that we included in the summary, but just a two, couple of things to highlight. Uh, one is this, despite our best efforts, uh, we we do not, this project does not qualify for the ITC. Uh, the consultants really nerded out on this one and we had several meetings on. Spreadsheets and depreciation schedules and just couldn't get there. So that uh, we're very confident on. Uh, we couldn't get there. So that does take that and that off the uh, off the table. We are uh, having some conversations with Eversource if if there's a possibility there. But anything Eversource will provide doesn't even come close to this area of magnitude that ITC was um, potential. So um, I want to close the book on that one, that that ITC is not eligible of uh, for geothermal. Uh, the report is updated as as Karen mentioned that uh, we we were successfully working with EMAC. They were very helpful in some uh, concepts. Uh, and so ACOM was uh, very great chasing that down. Uh, Chris Impero, who's who's our accounting expert. He showed up on site. I think he was up in the attic running around in the basement. So he was uh, really chasing down all these options. But the the bottom line is, and the the math speaks for itself, but uh, we are recommending. Funding for the geothermal system. And for a couple of reasons, one is it is consistent with the RTM SOMAR that was passed in in April. Uh, it is, when you look at the numbers, the uh, upfront cost is slightly higher for the geothermal compared to conventional. Uh, but that is made up in the, in the long run when you look at maintenance. And I think lastly, we, when we were looking at this, we really came down to, we've already invested in in the geothermal wells. And we do want to see if we can maximize that depreciation of of the asset that we've already paid for and haven't been using. So it it was a close, it was almost uh, nose and nose and nose on the, on the final and it came down to it, but. Uh, we just wanted to present, I think, a very good, comprehensive report that uh. Uh, has really been vetted for for a lot of people. So it's up to you now, uh, if you have any questions and ACOM and Dan and myself willing to uh. Uh, answer any questions you may have on the project.
Okay, I see some hands go up. I will start with Laura and then Mike.
Sorry, Mike, can you uh, elevate Dan? He just said he hadn't been elevated.
I guess before we have questions, Dan, if you have anything you'd like to add.
Uh, no, um, I I think that we have uh, beat this dead dog. So we're ready to move forward.
Okay.
There is a quote for the paper, ladies and gentlemen. Goodness, time to.
I was about to, I was about to say.
I'm, I'm sick of hearing, kicking it down the road, so I got a new one out there.
Uh, I was, I was about to to say, I I wouldn't have gone with that phrase, but you know. Go with Ms. Costin and then Mike.
So I just want to ask ACOM, um, I saw the name uh. In our panelists. Um, because, you know, if we're about to spend millions of dollars um, rehabbing. A geothermal system, are there any limitations to its use? To the field, um, to the field to use?
No, and you know, our original scope of work for the project was really to see. Was the field designed properly for the school that we had and and for the load that you were putting on? And ultimately, that answer was yes. It it was designed properly. It should function properly. So to be able to reuse it now is only a benefit to y'all. And and no reason it shouldn't, shouldn't function.
No, I'm asking about use of our actual field. With the geothermal. Um, infrastructure under it. Is, are we, um, should we be conscious of, say. Putting heavy carnival equipment on our field, heavy equipment that could damage any of the components. That are in the ground. Um, you know, this is an area that. that are in the ground? Um, you know, this is an area that um has had um carnival traffic, carnival rides, all that in. And, you know, we've been told, don't put any stakes in the ground. We've been told, you know, proceed cautiously. And I don't want to do anything to jeopardize a $5 million plus investment. Um, that, you know, our students and staff have been, you know, basically relying on a giant trailer outside. Um, so I want to be explicit in asking you um how we best preserve what we've done.
Yeah, so I think Dan and his team have found the holes, right, Dan? I mean, I I think they were about five feet deep.
Yeah, we have, we have the general layout of the wells, correct?
Yeah, so with that generally, I I would caution you anytime you do try to put stakes in the ground or anything like that. But from, you know, being that deep and with it being a flexible pipe, there shouldn't be a serious damage only from a puncture. So, you know, understanding what Dan has and is, you know, filed that we can maybe stake out and say, hey, try to avoid these spots. I think that would be the most caution when when you're actually putting something into the ground.
And heavy equipment on top is not a concern for you?
Again, depend, I mean, if it's going to be able to sit on grass, it probably would be okay. But if it if it's starting to make dents in the grass, like sinking in, then it's probably too heavy.
Oh, like if there's like rain and soil is soft, like the things.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And and there are ways around it. I mean, you know, there's obviously, if you can spread the load out, what more and not have significant point loads in spots. Um, that would be the only caution.
Just saying, okay.
Yeah. But again, the field, so so far, the field is intact. So, you know, anything you've done previously has not damaged the field to date. So the pressure tests and everything came back okay. Um, so.
Um, okay, Mike and then Wendy.
Right, so um uh Ben, um, you can just help me understand, make sure I have the 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 numbers right here because um I couldn't get the the different pages to reconcile. So I I think I might be reading something wrong. So um, so where's we see the total cost of updating the geothermal here and the uh 5.246, is that right?
Yeah, that is that is a CIP sheet. What
Yeah.
Always throwing you off on reconciliation is there's two line items that have been added to the CIP sheet that are not in the AECOM report. The very first one is the design A and E. So design cost is not included in the uh uh a um report. And also the contingency, contingency was not included. So those two line items uh will will pretty much throw throw off your uh reconciliation.
Right, right, good. Okay, so that's why it's a different number on the executive summary of the AECOM report.
Yes.
That makes sense. Got you. Okay, so we see at the at the 5.2 number um um savings um over the 25 years of 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 about how much we think?
You go to page seventy one of the report, that's where it has the um the present value cost. And I think that shows you the uh future savings of 207, almost 280,000.
Okay, over the, you know, like the
Twenty-five, yeah.
Great.
Comparing traditional and the geothermal.
Okay, okay. Awesome. Thanks. That's why I just wanted to clarify. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Oh, so um on another note, why I just have with my, so I I heard some um uh Chris, the um I was talking to some folks today who um were concerned about uh the depth of the wells, like um um that um they've been talking to engineers that traditionally the depths of the wells are a lot deeper than these, and these only went so far deep. Um, um, you have concerns about that, the uh functionality and thinking about that, you know, how these compare to to um wells traditionally, uh are they as deep as they need to be or um any kind of depth that we think we need to be worried about?
No, so these holes are about 400 feet deep. Um, we've done some here in Colorado, 600 plus feet deep. We've looked at other ones where we can go, you know, 1,000 feet deep. It's really all up to the geology in your area and specific, you know, requirements in your area. And, you know, the 400 feet is a reasonable number for similar projects of this scale in that area.
Okay, and all the wells are 400?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay.
Um, so I think uh Laura didn't feel com- com- confident with um Chris's explanation, but I'm going to try again. Is there a precise measure of how much weight the wells can withstand?
Hmm. Um. It would depend on the soil above it, right? So I think there if there's five feet of soil above it, whatever that soil consists of would have a different compressive strength than, you know, say a clay or a rock or something else. I don't know off the top of my head what that number is and how much weight and connections to come on those things, but again, what you've done to date hasn't damaged them, so you know.
I mean, and and we can just avoid that area.
Sure.
Right? I mean, they're not that big. The wells don't take, I mean, they are big, don't get me wrong, but they're, you can avoid them.
I think with this, with this, if we, you know, kind of stake them out and kind of plot them you know, specifically where they are, it would definitely help in the long run to say, hey, you know, there's something under here, avoid avoid doing anything here if you can.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I do just want to say, uh, Chris and uh and Mike, they've doing a great job answering this question. Uh, they, this was not part of their original scope. So they're they're doing very good answering the question. We never pro, we never uh primed them on this, but uh the question that we're asking, I think we're all, we're talking to us, they're not engaged in that. Uh, but I just want to make clear that we weren't avoiding it. This was not in the scope of the work that we were trying to do. But Chris is doing a great uh off the cuff response. I just wanted to butt that out there.
Okay, um, so I I actually, I don't see any hands up. So I actually had a quick question. Um, and I know we sort of asked asked this before, um, in regards to doing um reusing the geothermal. You noted that you found the geo, the the found the geo, the field location for the existing wellheads, because that was, we had some discrepancy in two different documents. So thank you for doing that. Um, and you still wanted to just, I I guess there was some other work that you wanted to do in regards to that. That required digging up portions of the field? In order to to you have further further testing, which is what you noted?
So like a thermal conductivity test or?
Uh, you, I'm trying to figure out where it was that you noted. So, you know, in the next steps for the estimated schedule for the reuse of the germal geothermal system. Uh, I think it's shows like page 15. Uh, it's page 27 of the document, but page 50 notes, it's page 15 of your report. Um, so next steps, other 5.2, it says field testing of the existing geothermal well uh and fields, the well field includes field locations of wellheads and testing them to for impact design. So I just didn't know if that include, you know, that required uh digging up any of the field.
Um, I think what Dan has now and what Dan had found previously was kind of that field location of wellhead. So that was kind of, you know, we've checked that box. The TC test is something that won't really impact anything that we're doing. Um, it may be recommended just for your own benefit to have a solid TC test on file since the one we found was semi flawed. Um, and then the flushing and purging, I think, was actually completed already. Um, so a lot of that work has already been done by Dan and his team.
Okay, so that I just assume that that means that we don't need to dig up the field. We're not taking the field offline to do any of this prior to.
Correct.
Okay, um, so that's good. And then I guess the other question I had is, I know we've talked about it. I know that there was a different recommendation um from EMAC and I will, you know, I've been sitting on that committee and I'll say, I really appreciate the time, energy and dedication that they've had to finding out, you know, that ways to best support use of the current system. You know, to reuse it as well as to um support, you know, the RTM SOMAR with wanting to also reuse it um and taking into a a account the way the school uses uh heat and air. Um, so I I think that was, it's been really well thought out. Um, but I assume that, you know, especially uh it changes a few things, including reuse of of certain systems and re revising and re redoing how we do things within the school. So I was just curious to see if you knew if we go with this plant, how long it, what the estimate of the time for construction would take, because I assume during that time, uh, the building would not have access to possibly heat or air conditioning, because we obviously have to take it offline. And there's a change with the way that they were going to reconstruct some of it.
Right, so from a construction standpoint, it would be the same kind of timeline as you would do in the traditional, if you went with the other system. So the the construction timeline should be identical. There's the same amount of work inside the building that needs to happen. Um, and a lot of the work for our solution, some of the demo and everything can be done prior to, you know, taking things out and you know offline. Um, so with with the temporary system you do have set up today, obviously, that can help support and backfeed anything that we do when we have to do, take something offline. Um, so in in our scenario, I think the boiler system that's actually on the generator and on the backup heat, you know, it can provide heating for the building while we kind of work on some of the other things. But ultimately, we're trying to get this thing done in in the course of a summer. Right? So that we don't want to have to deal with you know, all of that stress and and stuff that comes with with the winter and things freezing, right? So if the school isn't used over the summer, we can try and get in there, get this done. Uh, and get out of there and have it ready for the next year.
Perfect. You you gave me the exact answer I was looking for is that there's a difference in time at the system, you know, and how and impact to the school and the students.
Right.
Depending on which system we we go with. So that that answered the question. Thank you. Um, I don't know. You know, if anybody else has questions? I see no hands raised. No, no questions, anyone? So um, I guess with that, I I will, I can turn it back over to, I guess, you know, uh, for Ben and Dan, and because I suppose that the next question is for us as the board to have this discussion as to which option um it is we are going with uh for HVAC. It seems the recommendation here is to um go with the new uh, you know, to to go and reuse the geothermal uh wells with the revised recommendation for the system that will allow for um the school to switch from heating to cooling uh during the day uh as needed, correct?
Yes, and uh depending on the vote, whatever the the board votes tonight, hopefully there is a vote tonight, we would then uh tomorrow, just it worked out very well with uh inclement weather. We now with the VET tomorrow, we will be presenting the CIP sheet uh to have them include in in their deliberation uh with the uh for the budget.
Okay, so um I guess I can open the discussion then up to members of the board to to see what your thoughts are. A about which system we would go with uh ver and as well as, you know, if we are in agreement to, we can certainly take a vote on that this evening. I think we've we've spent a lot of time over the years talking about it, so um I'm not going to go with Dan's comment on moving forward, but uh I'd like to try to take a vote on this this evening, so we can, we can put this in our budget request. Sophie?
I was just going to say, I agree. I think we've talked about this a lot. I really appreciate all the work that's been done. And I think I I'm in favor of voting on this and I'm in favor of moving forward for the geothermal system.
Okay, uh, I mean, if if every, I I, you know, I don't know if anybody else has comments or things that they want to share. I mean, I'm perfectly happy to move forward to have that vote this evening. Um, again, I much like Sophie, and especially after having sat with EMAC and reading through the report, so much due diligence has been done. And the fact that the school be able to use the, if we revise this the system to be able to use it in the way that best suits the needs of the school. Um, it also supports another elected bodies wished for us with regarding the RTM. I'd like to be able to support that as well. Um, and yes, it's a minimal impact financially at the start, but as you can see, shows that uh that money comes back in other ways. Mike?
I think you should, I think you should amend your motion.
Well, I will. I just, we're still in that first piece of the discussion, but I figure I I have to, I was waiting to amend it to see where you know, we, because I would make the, based on the the choice and the finances. Wendy? You're muted, Wendy.
Thank you. Um, I am not in favor of the geothermal uh unit for this particular project. Um, I if I I'm just worried that it puts the carnival at risk, the the St. Rock's feast, which I think is part of the community and part of the part of Greenwich's tradition to have this, and it's home to um our immigrant families. And I think I I just think it would be terrible if if um we put that in jeopardy.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else has comments that they want to share. Um, I'm happy to make a motion uh for one option and then see how that goes. If it doesn't, if it fails, we can make a second motion. Mike?
All right, I'll talk again. The um, I appreciate Wendy bringing out the elephant in the room. For those people watching at home, many of those questions uh board questions were about Saint Rocks and things. What I heard Chris say is that anything that we've done over the last 20 years hasn't impacted the wells. So I'm confident based on that, that this is not um that there's nothing said here tonight that would prohibit us from continuing um the very important um traditional, the Saint Rocks, which is just a feast, which is just as important to the community probably as as air conditioning. Um, so I I do, I I I I appreciate Wendy uh bringing it up. I don't see the two concepts in in common.
Okay, well, our our responsibility is to the schools and the students within them. So that's what I'm going to focus on. Um, and hopefully we can figure all of the other pieces out of, you know, field use or whatever. It's partially why I wanted to see if we needed to dig up the fields at all to do this. So um I don't know if anybody else has any comments, uh, Dr. Jones?
Yeah, I just, I just want to remind the board because I think this is an issue we'll want to nail down. But we didn't have the carnival since 2009 when the geothermal was put in. So we only have, is it, I think, the last two years? So we really don't know, but we can, we need to work on trying to get get a good, solid answer for this. Um, because the idea that we are going to be able to manage staking out the field um every summer, I don't think Dan Watson's team is going to have the time to do that. And you used to be able to see the wellheads sitting on the top of the field. And then when we leveled it all out and put in soil, it's a little more challenging now than it it was even just five years ago. So we obviously are going to have to look at that.
Okay, uh, Ms. Bahat?
I do agree with you, Karen, that our first priority is to the schools. Um, although I know that we want to work in concert with different community partners. Um, but our first, our primary responsibilities to the schools and the function of those of that that school in particular. And if we can strike a happy balance after, great. Um, but I think we need to keep our focus on what's best for the school and the the field.
Yeah, so this this vote is uh, does anybody else have a a comment? Otherwise, I'm just pulling up the the cost and I'll make I'll make a motion for one. If it fails, well, we can make a motion for the other. That works? Anyone comments? Okay, um, so uh I'd like to amend the motion, the my initial motion made um to, sorry. Uh, add Hamilton, add the reuse of the revit, I don't know exactly how to say it. I guess it's the uh reconstruction of the geothermal uh, the cost of the reconstruction of the geothermal cell the system for Hamilton Avenue's HVAC of I'm sorry, is it $5,246,000 uh to the FY 26 budget? FY26 capital plan? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Sophie Coven seconds. I will call, it's a, since we're online, I have to call for a verbal vote. Ms. Behat?
Yes.
Ms. Coven?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mer, Dr. Mercanti Anthony?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Stowe?
Yes.
Laura, Ms. Costin?
Yes.
Wendy?
No.
So, okay. And then, I always forget to take my own vote. I'm a yes. As we know. Cody is absent this evening, so that is. Six, zero, one, six, one, zero. Yeah, six, one, zero. So that passes. So I, I'd like to, so we can add those CIP sheets and if we could send those out to. The BET as soon as possible this evening, so that they have them prior to tomorrow morning. When we're meeting with them at eight thirty, I would greatly appreciate it. I. Would that be okay?
Yeah, we, we can make that happen.
And then I'd like to make a request because I know it is important to the community that, you know, I'm not sure if it would be through AECOM, if we need to, or how we would do it is to. Do, look at the fields and see what kind of weight load it can take going forward so that we can. You know, figure that, that out for other needs of the neighboring community as well. For the use of those fields. If that's okay. That, that's not part of the motion, but it's just a request. Which leads us to our next topic. Is the amendment to the FY26 capital request for pool repairs. Excuse me, for the Greenwich High School. And I know I need to make a motion. We just got that earlier. And that would be the motion that I'm going to make is to, I'd like to make a motion to amend the FY26 capital request for pool repairs. Once we have more details in regards to, well. I'll just say, I'm making a motion to amend the FY26 capital request for pool repairs at GHS. I don't know if I have a second.
I think you would want to say full repairs at the GHS pool.
We're full, okay.
I'll second that, Karen.
Thank you, Ms. Coven, and that we can open it up for discussion and. You know. So I'm going to hand that back over to Ben and.
I'm going to kick it over to Dan, but before I do, I, we don't anticipate any action tonight. I think some of the comments were shared. As we dig into it, but Dan really has been digging into this, this pool, so I'm going to turn it over to Dan to discuss.
So I just want to. Give you a little history on the pool. When the pool was, and Ben, I might go off a little bit here, so kick me under the table. When the pool was originally. Made, it was, it wasn't deep enough and I still have yet to determine. Why the reason was that we added depth to the pool, whether it was. A safety issue or whether it was to meet NCAA rules, be that as it may. The pool was made deeper by putting a curb around it. So that was done in 1997, I think it was the date. And I, I wish I had all my notes in front of me, but I don't. But in, in any event. In the summer of 2024, we did a. More of a cosmetic upgrade to the pool where we put a, an epoxy deck coating on. We took the tiles up. That were showing age and were popping loose. So we put a slip resistant deck coating on. Came out very nice. Everything's very positive about it. Once it was completed, we started noticing pounding water. On one of the corners of the pool, outside the pool on deck. And it appeared that the water was coming through a joint. That was created when they added the concrete curb. So. The concrete curb and the original deck is what's called a cold joint. And we. Thought, and we still think that water was getting through that cold joint. In any event. We had some professionals come in. We noticed more tiles inside the pool were coming loose. At about that same elevation at various areas around the pool. So we did some further investigation, including we emptied the pool and. Some questions came up about. The drains that were at the bottom of the pool. So. In 2008 or 2009, it was a federal law that came out. Stemming from a horrible incident where a young girl lost her life. By being trapped by a pool. Some, a pool drain. So at that time, they went into an immediate action. They came up with a design. They did some repairs in the pool. Pool was put back in place. Everything was good to go. But once we started looking at the pool this time around, our professionals came up with an issue that they don't think that it's compliant. So that's number one. We've since then did a, a quick remediation on the pool that included a. A, an emergency button that would shut down. The filtration and pump system immediately. And we've installed it. And we, we trained, we've discussed that with the athletic department and the coaching staff. And we put in place a, a requirement that somebody be at the pool at all times that their sole job is to. Be by that. Emergency shut off. So that's number one. Also, while we were looking at the pool with this professional. Probably a bigger item came up is that there appears to be a headroom issue. With the diving board. If anybody's been to the pool. Recently or ever, there's a large girder that is almost. Within reach of the diving board. And I'm gonna say almost with reach. If you, if you're a non diver, you wouldn't think, oh, there's. There's no way anybody would touch that. But after doing some. Measurements with the professional, it's nonconforming. It's within. A headroom issue. For diving standards. So that's another problem we're having. So. We've talked with the engineer who's looking at it now, as well as the engineer who did previous repairs. There's some. Differentiating of opinions that we have yet to really come to the bottom of. So that's, that's where we're at right now. We, we, we see there's an issue, which is, it really depends on how it's reviewed and. Which engineer can prove to us whether it's inconformity or not. So that we, we don't have much more to tell you other than that there are issues. We are working on it. At the present moment, the way the pool is operated, we're, we're okay with the pool itself.
Okay.
Like to take in there, sorry.
Yeah, no, I know. I had sent a question in earlier and I, I think you. Had answered some of it, but I just was wondering if you had any information, you know. Information as to any, other than, you know, you mentioned the curbing and the changes to the drainage. And shut off switch. Have there been, and you know, obviously in the decking, but is, have there been any other major or minor repairs? Done since the pool was originally installed?
To the best of my knowledge, no. We still have most of the original filtration and pumps. The electrical service is the same. So all that comes into play. It's, it's, there's a need of a major renovation and I, I hate using that word, but. You're gonna peel the onion here.
And so that, when you said we have the original electric and, and stuff and filtration, so. We have not, since the pool was opened in many years ago. We have not, I just wanted to see if we've replaced any of the systems or major components. So we haven't. Replaced heating, filtration?
Not at, not at a wholesale, wholesale scale. I mean, there may have been. You know, a component to a pump that may have been changed, but the actual pumps or the actual filters themselves, no, they're, they're original to the installation.
I mean. I personally love a good, you know, vintage piece, but probably not in my pool. So, all right, Sophie?
Thank you, Dan, for that update. I think I just wanted to mention, I'm, I'm very familiar with the pool. I spent a lot of time there because I have a son who plays water polo and swims. So yeah, I, I know. How it looks and it's my understanding that the curb was put around the pool. Partly because the pool is used both for varsity and JV girls and boys swimming and also water polo. So the pool is, is really much too shallow. To be used for water polo, but we do the best that we can. But my understanding is I think that that was part of the reason the curb was put in place is just to even. Make it somewhat more workable for, for those teams to use it. The pool originally was put in in the 1970s, right? When the school was originally built. Is that right, Dan?
Um, yeah, but I don't have the exact year. I, I think it was an added attraction. I don't think it was there when the pool, when the school opened. I don't have those notes.
But it's sort of roughly about fifty years old.
I would say before seventy-four opened. But again, I don't.
Yeah, so, so we're talking about a fifty-year-old facility. Right, okay. So I mean, I appreciate that we're in early days of thinking about what's going on with the pool, but a fifty, fifty years. For a pool is a long time. So I'm not surprised that we're, we're seeing some issues and it feels like maybe there's an opportunity to. Do something here, you know, that's, you know, could significantly improve the quality of the facility. If we, if we need to explore all of these. Different issues, as you were saying, it's going to be peeling the layers off of the onion. And, you know, my concern is when you have a facility that's. Nearing end of life, you know, we're going to see problem after problem. So I just, I hope that, you know, for us as a board. That we can start thinking about, okay, how do we want to approach this problem and be smart about it? Because we have a lot of great programs going on there. We have, I think it's 116 athletes participating. In competitive sports in that pool every year. And we still do some aquatics for the freshmen. So it's a busy place. And so I'm sure this will be complicated and I'm glad that you're looking into it. Appreciate it. And I think we'd just like to get updates as they come in.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm sorry if you said this, Dan, while I stepped out. Did, um, what's our timeframe here? If we're trying to, we're, we're trying to make the twenty, we're trying to make this year's budget vote? So is that what I'm hearing?
That was our original game plan. As we continue to do our due diligence, we had more questions than answers. And so, so right now it's TBD, but we're definitely not in position to. Ask for any dollar amount unless the BET brings it up. We don't plan to bring it up tomorrow because we don't have a formal quest in front of them.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense.
I don't see any other hands up. I guess. So I'll ask a question. Having, I mean, granted, the pool at this high school is indoor, so it's probably slightly different. I know we have a pool. In my backyard that was also put in the nineteen, in the 1970s. And I know just in the, you know, 20 years or whatever that I've been here. How much money we've had to put in and how many times we've had to replace things like the filter and, and other equipment. So I'm amazed that the stuff at the high school has lasted. And is workable as long as it has. So I, the question I guess I would have for, for Ben and for Tony is. Do we have any, any funding to do an actual? Review of what would need to be done to. Improve the, the pool, getting pricing for. You know, if, if we need to change the depth, we obviously, and, and change the filtration to meet the current. Legal requirements for those, and not the filtration, excuse me, the. The filters at the bottom and sides. Because obviously we would need to have some kind of idea of, of cost to do all of this work.
So, so Dan has engaged the professional to, to do some of this work and we're, we're finding the money, I believe, out of our operating budget for some of that design. We have zero dollars for any capital. So that's why, once we have an understanding of what, what is, what is on the table, what can be addressed, it'll have to be. An interim or depending on the, the frequency or the, the cycle, we've put it in the capital plan. Next year or it all depends on what we know. We just don't know right now the timing.
I assume we also don't know the actual. Extent of the work that needs to be fully done and what needs to be replaced versus, you know, rehabbed. So, yeah. Sophie?
I'm just wondering, when, do you have a sense of when he might have a recommendation or be able to present findings?
I, I want, the short answer is no, because we really, we really were trying to make it for this meeting and just, the stars did not align with the consultant schedules. And their workload and as we kept digging. So I just, any number, any, any data I'd give you would, I would be making it up and I.
Okay, that's fine. No, I appreciate your honesty. So we'll find out when we find out. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? I would like, I know you guys mentioned this before and I know it was mentioned in the information that was, you know, shared with us, but you know. Again, I want to ensure that people know that the pool, we have added work around, so the pool is safe for students to be in it. So. I know we're talking about questions about rehabbing and doing work to the pool. To bring it up to standards and things, but this pool is, is safe for our students to be in there. So we're, we're not looking at an immediate. Issue, correct?
Correct. If it wasn't safe, we wouldn't have it open.
I just wanted to make sure that that was very clear as we're having this discussion tonight, so that we don't have anybody that misunderstands it. That the pool isn't currently safe. So. So then I guess I'd like to table the motion to add, you know, that was made earlier in regards to this, to, you know, when we have more information. Table, table the action on this.
Karen, can I just ask one quick question?
Or I also, Jen, I don't know if your hand went up, but Sophie, and then if Jen has a question, I wasn't sure.
Ben, you may not be able to answer this question, but do you feel like we have adequate funds, you know, in the operation, operating budget to do like a thorough analysis of the pool? Or do we need to ask, you know?
That's what I just asked him earlier.
Yeah, sorry, I'm.
Still TBD, unfortunately. We, we have enough for what we started and just depends on how, how deep we go and how much farther we have to go. We may have to. We may have to ask, but we're, we're trying to do our due diligence the best we can.
Okay, sorry to be repetitive. Thanks.
Jen, I don't know if you were just stretching or you actually had a question. No, just stretching. Okay, so if that is all for this evening. There's a motion that can be made on, well, before I, you know, before we make that motion, I did want to thank, you know, AECOM and. Our high school administration and all the other people who are coming here and. Sharing this information with us this evening, because I see a lot of you are still here this evening. But with that, I don't know if there's a motion that somebody would like to make this evening?
Karen, you need to withdraw your motion first, so this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I did. I said I, I said that before, but I can do it again. Then I was, I was wanted to table the motion. I guess I will withdraw the motion to a later date. As opposed to saying I'm tabling it. Is that correct? Mike?
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Sophie?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? Wendy? All right, I'm going to have to do this verbally. So Sophie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Laura? Laura?
You're muted.
You're muted.
I unmuted to say yes.
Okay, thank you. Jen?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And I too am a yes. And with that, prior to saying. Thank you to everybody, wanted to wish all of our staff and our students and parents a wonderful February break, as I know that is coming up next week and. Say, I look forward to seeing the BET members tomorrow and having in-depth discussions about our, about our budget. So. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Night.
Night.